Was that Jen?
Hi, here we go.
She's back.
Welcome everybody to our July fifteenth board supervisor meeting. This time, Slade, would you pray for us please?
At this time, if you have a cellphone, please call us in.
She's back.
It could be me.
Let's pray together. We're going to thank you for the day that you've given us today. You, Father, thank you for the privilege that we have of gathering together. Thank you, Lord, for this season of the year, Lord. We're reminded of all the ways that you bless us, that you provide for us, that you give so abundantly to us, Lord, for this county, for the way that you blessed this county, Father, that you protected it, that you provided for its safety, for its citizens, Lord, that you carried us thus far. And we can trust you to continue to carry us forward. Lord, I pray for blessings to be poured out on our county. Father, I pray that as we move through this trying time, that the blessings would be ever apparent, Lord, that we would see them for what they are, thank you for them, not take them for granted. Lord, I pray for our families, Lord, to be strengthened in this time, that we can be encouraged together as friends, as family, as fellow citizens, Lord, that we can come together and find ways, Lord, to unify, find ways, Lord, that we can continue to see that this county prospers. You've been so gracious to us, and through the power, the provision, the sacrifice of your son, we have freedom in eternal life, Lord, that nothing that this life offers us will ever detract from what we have ultimately in you. Our relationship with you, Lord, and that forever lasting relationship that we will have with you, Lord, is such a powerful and priceless blessing to us, and we thank you, Christ, and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Greg. Okay, under public comments and recognition, we have a young gentleman here, we get the honor with a scholarship today through our Supervisor Association. Greg, this time, would you read our declaration?
Absolutely, absolutely. I want to invite Tucker to come forward. Guys, this is Tucker Marbell. He is the 2020 recipient of the Mississippi Association of Supervisors County Employed Scholarship. Tucker, welcome, we're glad. That's Leslie, you'll come forward as well. This is Mom. Leslie is an employee of Madison County Tax Assessor's Office, and we're proud to have both of them with us. They are residents of Rankin County. I think that may speak volumes, doesn't it?
Yes.
So, we're really excited to be able to recognize Tucker today. Tucker is receiving today a sc- this is the most important thing we'll hand you, okay? So, that's the actual scholarship. This is given on behalf of the Rankin County Board of Supervisors. We do this annually. It is to a deserving county employee student who is going farther in their education, and we're really excited. So, welcome. Thank you for being here today. Thank you for giving the Rankin County Board of Supervisors the privilege of being able to honor you. Congratulations, and we look forward to hearing great things about you in the future.
Absolutely.
Yeah, congratulations. I would shake your hand.
Hey, we can't get a picture taken with a mask on?
Yeah. We'll get a picture, I'm gonna have to do it myself.
We will. Please, Mrs. Johnson.
Hey, Slade, I want to say one thing about Tucker there, just for a second. I'm gonna take my mask down and talk about him just for a minute. Tucker played baseball at Northwest, and the last game he pitched was a phenomenal game down on the Gulf Coast right before everything shut down. And my son's been able to kind of watch him and kind of shadow in Tucker's steps up at Northwest Rankin there at the high school. But one of the true attributes Tucker has, and where he really demonstrates his leadership, is all the younger players look up to Tucker. And his little brother would follow him around and come to all the games, and work even as a bat boy with the guys, and they kind of all adopted him as basically their own little brother. But that's all because of the leadership and the kindness Tucker showed to all the underclassmen that come in below him. And I want to let him know, and just remind him, that those type of things that you do, those examples that you show in leadership to those younger guys, mentor those guys into maybe passing it on to the younger guys coming underneath them right now. So, those actions and things that you do, they all take a part of it, and they all look up to you because you were a leader on that baseball team. So, I want to say congratulations to you on that, but thank you for that leadership side that you put forth, especially to my son, but to the other players out there at Northwest. So, thank you for everything you did. I know the season ended not the way we wanted it to end, right there, kind of quickly, but you were a stud your last outing. He's gonna play college baseball, so he's headed to play college baseball, left handed pitcher, and he'll make you look like a fool.
Where's he going?
He's Mississippi community college.
Correct. He'll make you look like a fool standing there with a curveball coming out your head. But thank you for all that, Tucker, and we appreciate you very much.
Congratulations, bud.
Thank you.
Can I get the guys, if y'all stand where you are there, I think it'd be fine. Y'all, I want you in the picture as well, Mom. So, I'm gonna get a quick picture here, and we'll make sure that this photo is preserving the occasion, okay? So, it doesn't matter if you smile or not.
Don't matter if you smile or not.
Here we go. One, two, three. One more, just to be safe. One, two, three. Okay, guys, we got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Thank you, bud. Good to see you.
Thank you. Next signed up for our public comment is Mr. Brian Johnson.
Good morning. Good morning, how are y'all? I'm Brian Johnson. I'm on the Northwest Rankin Athletic Association Soccer Board and the overall board. They have Craig Miller with me, who is the overall president for Northwest Rankin Athletic Association. Have Tori Simon, who's on the soccer board, and Brad Bridges, who's also on the soccer board. On behalf of the board, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to come and speak to you today. Many of you know, we've had a lease over at PRV across the street from Shaggy's, behind the old Rapid Site, and also over on 471 for baseball since March of 1998. Since then, you know, over 20 years, we've had a lot of changes over there. We've grown tremendously. We have well over 2,000 kids that play for us in soccer, softball, baseball, football, and cheerleading. Also around us, there's been a lot of changes with developments, new roads being built, commercial, residential, and it's caused us a few issues that I just wanted to talk to y'all about today and see if we can't get a little help on. We've been to PRV, unfortunately, back in 1998, when we signed the original lease with PRV. Back then, we have, you know, we have these two ditches that go through our complex, at the soccer complex. Back when we signed that lease, you could literally step across those ditches. Today, they're about 20, anywhere from 18 to about 24 foot wide, and some places, they're like 14 to 16 foot deep. Our issue is we're about to start losing field space. That's our biggest concern right now. And we're already packed in there like sardines as it is, and having to find other space to send kids to practice. So, we really can't afford to lose any field space. So, I just wanted to bring y'all some pictures here and just ask, you know, if there's anything we can do, you know, to get, whether it's Rankin County partnering up with PRV and Northwest Rankin, to find a solution with this. You know, I've met with Mr. Bishop, Supervisor Bishop out there. I've also met Mr. Cross, been out there. I've talked to Mr. Gaines about it. You know, we're not asking for anybody to come and drop a million, million and a half dollars on this project. We're just looking for help in any form, shape, form. We've already been stockpiling. Anytime I see somebody busting out of a parking lot, I stop in there, hey, where are you taking it? They're hauling it to the dump, they're paying to dump it. You know, I get them to bring it out there, dump it for free, and our eventual plan is to reshape the ditch and hopefully put that free busted up concrete in the ditch. It's basically like riprap, it's just free. I did get a quote to riprap the one ditch here that runs north and south. It was, it was high, way high. And as a nonprofit who works strictly off of registration fees, we're not backed by anybody, we just can't swallow that bill. So, we're just basically looking for help. I just put a couple pictures in here so that y'all would know kind of what we're dealing with, the water that runs through there, and how wide it is, and some places, and how deep it is. The third picture here that you see of the water line, that's a four inch water main. It used to be underground. When it got busted back last summer, it was about five to six foot above the bottom of the ditch. We had to, ended up having to bore it, put it back under the ditch, because every time it rained, a log or something would come down through there and it'd bust the water line, so we'd have to redo, replace the water line. We eventually got it bored back under the ditch, but, you know, it is, it is definitely, the ditch has definitely gotten a lot worse since I've been on the board, since, let's see, I got on the board four years ago. So, it continues to get worse on us. We also talked about, I think, one of our, about the fifth or sixth picture that you see, that is one of the legs to our main bridge. It goes from the concession stand across the field, five, six, and seven. We're fixing to have to address those issues. Those supports aren't even touching anything, they're just hanging in the air. So, you know, with kids going across it, parents going across it, that's something we're gonna have to address here pretty quick. We already had to address one bridge, so we're gonna have to address this one pretty soon. I do have a picture of what I've already stockpiled in here that can, that can be placed in the ditch. Some of them are pretty big, they're gonna have to be busted up a little bit more and then put into the ditch. And then the last time, I think, Mr. Bishop was out there, we discussed the road issue around the complex. It's in, it's in pretty bad shape. We've, we've, we've had, you know, Rankin County come out there and patch it every so often, but it's getting to the point now that it's just, it's in bad shape. Like I said, we're, we're not asking for a handout to come, come solve all of our issues or drop a whole bunch of money on it, we're just, we're just looking for help, and whatever that, that may be.
Brian, what specifically would you like to ask us to do?
Well, you know, I think, I think, you know, obviously, to riprap the one ditch that runs north and south, which is our main issue right now, obviously, our, the ditch that runs east and west from the Rapid Site coming in, it is actually, it's gonna be giving us a problem. That's gonna be, you know, a few years down the road, we can work on that later. The main one is the one that runs north and south out of the neighborhood. You know, we really need to get that fixed. I got a quote to get that one completely ripped rap, and it was about $250,000 to $300,000.
Is that them providing the riprap?
That was them providing the riprap, yes.
How much would it cost just to get a contractor out there to put down the concrete you have?
I would love to know. I've had five contractors come out there and look at it just to put the riprap that I currently have, and it's not gonna go very far. But I just wanted, you know, how much would it cost to reshape the ditch, rework the ditch, put in filter fabric, and then set the concrete that we have? Let's go as far as we can with what we have. And every one of them said, I'll get you a quote back in the next week, and never hear from them again. I've had five come out there, and I've emailed them, and I don't know if it's, I don't know if they, they don't want to touch it because it's a main, you know, water, main watershed into the Pearl, or if, I don't know, I don't know why I can't get an answer on that. You know, if, if, if we could continue stockpiling free material, you know, Northwest Rankin Athletic Association does not have a problem pumping money into the project, we just can't, we just can't go in and pay the $250,000, $300,000 to do it, you know, the way it needs to be done. So, we're just trying to, I guess, find other avenues and resources.
Craig, are they eligible to apply with NRCS?
There were a couple of, a couple of thoughts that come to mind. As you guys know, the big picture perspective is that Northwest Rankin Athletic Association is a private nonprofit entity. It's, and because of that classification as a private nonprofit, it creates some real challenges for Rankin County. The property is controlled, controlled, I realize it's underlying leasehold property, but it's controlled by a private entity, the association itself. And so, that, that creates some real challenges for us because it's delineated as private property. And so, anything that we would try to accomplish there would have to be very, very carefully undertaken. There would have to be a considerable amount of research that goes into how exactly can the county participate in a project like that. One, one thing that does come to mind is that if there is any openness on the part of PRV, which is the underlying entity that controls the property, it controls it through this lease, but it still is the primary owner of the property, state of Mississippi owns the property. If we can enter into some sort of agreement with PRV, there could be an option there where, in essence, we are working with PRV to bring improvement to the underlying condition of the property. PRV has not, in the past, been willing to really put any money into things like this. That's been my experience. They, they spend all their money on dredging and trying to keep the reservoir itself and the dam under control, and they just don't have funds. All they get is appropriated from the state. So, that's a challenge for them on their side. So, that's, that's the opening salvo on that. Steve alludes to the NRCS, which to me, this looks like a tailor made project for an NRCS project. It ought to be right in their wheelhouse to at least explore how it is that federal funds could be acquired.
Could PRV make an application?
Yes.
I mean, they'd have to be another one.
Just to speak a little bit on the PRV side, we have been to PRV as well, met with John Sigmund and a couple other ones over there, and every time we've been to them and asked them to look at this project, their response is, well, according to your lease, it says in the fine print that was, that was signed back in 1998, when you could step across the ditch, it says that Northwest Rankin Athletic Association is to maintain any and all ditches inside the roadway. That's been their response to us. So, they've been unwilling to help to this point.
How would it still, I'd try to explore PRV going to NRCS, because it's not costing them anything.
Sure.
Tell me one thing, though, Craig, as far as the legalities of the county coming in into that area, into that location, and let's say the county decided, and Bishop's got all that money stashed away in his special hold and said, I want to put that money to the creek. Legally, the ability for us to go into that creek area on private property is what?
Unless we can establish some impact typical of our findings that we have made in the past, 19592.1, that allows us to say, you know, what our road is in danger here. There has to be a specific engineer finding road management.
So, I think in the past, what's happened around that area, where that bridge is at, the county has come in and tried to do some stabilizing work around that roadway. The problem we get ourselves into across the county is that private property accessing. So, inside that county roadway, which is, I guess, a guest amount on a lot of people's minds, but I know we've got some riprap outside that bridge a good ways, where we try to stabilize the bridge, which ties back into the roadway, which gives us legal authority to work. The problem we've had, and Craig and I've had this discussion, when I went out there and looked at it myself, was that the ditch is on private property side.
Right.
Which doesn't allow us to spend the tax money. So, that's the loophole that the Board of Supervisors finds us into, spending county tax dollars on private property.
Right.
So, that's, that's what's got Jay and I and everybody kind of hung up on what to do, Steve's idea on the NRCS.
This is tailor made as an NRCS project.
Yeah.
And because the county has public roads that are immediately adjacent to this property, there is a connection for the county to assist with the NRCS application. We can assist with that.
There has to be a sponsor.
Yes. I think PRV has to be the underlying sponsor.
Because it's their property.
Because the 100% of the work is gonna end up on PRV property and not necessarily county property, although there may be some connection there. But the county's roadway, our public road system in that property gives us a seat at the table, as it were, with our NRCS. This is a tailor made NRCS project. Why? You've got erosion that is headed right into the reservoir. That is its final destination, where it will then be dredged. So, this is, this is tailor made to address a situation that is right in the jurisdictional bailiwick of NRCS. It's what they were designed to do, your soil erosion control.
Yeah, a few months ago, we had a gentleman, same situation y'all, but he lived in the neighborhood where this ditch comes from, and he actually lost his fence, you know, and his dog, I think, fell in, broke his leg and all this, but he went to NRCS. Was he able to be successful?
I'm not sure where that project is, Jay, but we've, we've got him connected.
And I think he did qualify.
I've had one that's qualified on a ditch that was eaten away similar. They only have a certain amount of monies, and they only take on certain projects. I mean, you may qualify, but it may be two or three years down the road before they actually fund it.
For some reason, I see this as a, as a, potentially a higher priority item for them.
Yep.
Kids, ball, a significant impact in the community. There's no reason why this should not be a rallying point for the community with NRCS and to utilize our federal resources. We have congressmen and senators who are in regular communication with NRCS types who could be encouraged that this is a worthy project and it ought to be prioritized. So, it's gonna take legwork on the part of the association, and, but, but you're gonna have to aim at the people that can actually get in there and help. NRCS can go anywhere they want to go, where there's a blue line.
Craig, I want to ask you a question. I spoke with Alderman from Flowood last week and told me about Brian coming. Are we, after speaking with my sources on concrete, I didn't realize y'all had a stockpile quite that big, but if I found a couple places we can go get concrete, can the county pick up the concrete and drop it off there?
We need to, we need to figure out exactly where out there, Jay, the placement of the concrete.
I'm just talking about the stockpile. Just put it out there.
We need, we need to figure out where specifically out there placement of this material is designed to shore up our road.
I wasn't talking about shore anything up, I'm just talking about dropping it out there.
Okay.
You're not following.
All right, Jay, I'm cooking over here, I'm cooking, all right? So, start smelling what I'm cooking over here, okay? We've got to connect the stockpile, the moving of the stockpile to our road. Protection of the county road.
Well, and I think the biggest thing you can use that stockpile to protect is that county bridge that's in place over the top of that creek.
Which, and, and I'm gonna tell you, last, last summer, y'all did have to come out and fix that, because right as you come off that bridge, on, on the right hand side, we had a huge sinkhole right there that took away quite a bit of the road there, and y'all had to come out and fix that, that sinkhole.
So, and I guess that's kind of my interpretation of it. The, the bridge area needs some stabilization, and that.
Yeah, there are probably areas out there, there are probably areas out there that are currently jeopardizing the stability of our public road. That, that material like that could be helpful to, at least to extend the life of our road. And so, anything that we need to do to try to protect public infrastructure, we can, we can utilize material like that, Jay.
Our current law that allows us to give funds to nonprofit sporting.
Yes, that, that's right.
How is it worded still? I mean, before, we had some in kind work we could do. Is that still in there?
Yes, sir. I think as long as we stay within the total allocation that's been authorized, keep in mind now, that law was written to say, you guys, from county funds, we don't get money, we use county money under a grant program, but it's limited. I think it's a grand total of 50,000, and, and you guys set some limitations even on that.
Right.
And so, as, as long as it's a qualifying purpose, and it has to be, I mean, this, this would clearly qualify. It's an athletic association, doesn't matter if it's private or public, the grant funding allows for either way. But as long as it's tied to an athletic type of program, Jay, then each of you can allocate funds. Normally, what we try to do is spread that around among all of the districts, but, but the, the grant program doesn't require that that be done that way. There's a lot of options under that grant program. Y'all would just have to have an agreement on how it's gonna be spent.
I mean, if I had some money left in mine, could we do some in kind work?
Yes, as long as you understand that it, that we have to keep up with what that in kind, the cost of that in kind service is. Yes, sir. It could be utilized for that purpose.
And I guess if that happened, there would have to be an agreement from PRV.
Yes, there's an actual document, not, no, not with PRV, but there's a document that the association submits an application for our grant funding. We can, we can get that information to you. I'm telling you now, that's small potatoes based on what you need. There's only so much we can do.
Sure.
It's not gonna go far at all, but, but I'm saying, you, you probably want to get all you can. Your, your primary target needs to be NRCS.
Right. Well, and that's what, you know, that's what we've been doing, is just kind of chipping away at it a little bit as we can, and like I said, every time I see a project where they're busting out concrete, I try to grab it, you know, eventually one day we'll have enough, this whole ditch, I hope.
When you see that, is that somebody just a local or the city of Flowood?
Like, well, you know, a lot of it that I got was when they redid the parking lot at the Lowe's in Flowood. I just, I just happened to be going by there one day, and I saw them busting all that drive aisle out, so I pulled in there and I said, hey, where are you hauling this to? And he said, the dump. I said, you paying for that? And he said, yes, sir. And I said, what if you could haul it five miles down the road and dump it for free? He said, show me where. So, he followed me down there, and they dumped everything. They, unfortunately, I caught them towards the end of the project, but he hauled, you know, what he, what he had left down there. And then I've just, few, few projects here and there that I've, you know, come across just driving around.
Brian, based off of what you have there and talking with the other contractors, obviously, none of them came back with a price, is there any kind of idea of how much more you need?
You know, what, what we have stockpiled right now, I would say, just from talking to the contractors, would, you know, might do 50 yards, 60 yards of that total ditch. I mean, it's not gonna go far.
Wow.
I mean, we're, we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to stockpile quite a bit. It's, it's a, that's a long ditch, long growing down through there. You know, and, and the problem is, is it's not just the ditch, the, the picture right before the, the bridge picture that shows the, the support not touching the ground?
Yeah.
So, that, that part of the ditch there is actually coming off that main ditch and starting to run up in between two of our, two of our fields. So, it's, it's not only widening at the ditch, it's also starting to, to run up because of, you know, everything runs off that, those two fields there.
Yeah.
And then drops into the big ditch, and, which I got a, I got a big piece of culvert donated that I'm going to try to reshape that, that area that's growing back and put that culvert in, see if I can't get the water to run out, drop it to the ditch without eroding anymore. The problem is, is I can't really do this project till I have reshaped the ditch, the main ditch. So, I'm kind of, kind of stuck there at this point. I do have the material to do that project, but I just, I can't do it till I get the other ditch fixed.
I see the problem, and I want to help. I'm just not sure exactly how they gonna let me.
Oh, I appreciate it.
We can get you in touch with NRCS. Malcolm Lo is the county director.
I actually met with him two weeks ago out there.
Great. He, he's a good guy.
What did he say?
He said, man, I'd love to help you, and I know this is a priority, and I will go back and I will talk to our engineers and see what they say, but right now, I'm gonna tell you, it's probably gonna be a no, but if I have any good news, I'll call you back and let you know otherwise. And I emailed him last Thursday, and I've yet to hear back from him on that. So, I'm assuming that it wasn't good news.
But the no is likely related to revenue.
Yep, yep.
And allocation.
They just, I mean, they get funding, and when that's over, they don't know what they're gonna have next year.
Right.
And, but, get your name in, in there quick, you know, and he, he's an honest guy, I'll tell you that.
Was there any discussion at all about the fact that that soil is in the reservoir?
Yes, I mean, I told him, you know, I said, I said, look, here's the deal. I said, this ditch runs straight out and drops into the, into the Pearl River. So, you're, you're definitely, and I mean, he looked at all of it. He walked up down the ditch, and he said, I mean, y'all got a serious problem here, which is causing a problem downstream. He said, this, this needs to be addressed. He said, I just, I just don't know that, that there's gonna be funds available and that this is the project they're gonna want to take on right now. He said, but I will go back and I will ask the question, and he took a bunch of pictures to go show them, and he said, you know, I, I don't want to get your hopes up, so for right now, I'm standing right here talking, I'm gonna tell you, it's probably gonna be a no, and if I go back and I get, you know, any good news, I'll let you know.
Hey, Brian, refresh me again on what PRV said while they, they didn't feel like it was important enough to keep the siltation coming into the reservoir at that spot.
Uh, they.
What was their answer on that?
They're, they keep, everything that they, that, every time we've gone and talked to them, they keep going back to, according to your lease that you signed in 1998, it says that Northwest Rankin Athletic Association is supposed to maintain any and all ditches in between the road.
And I guess, and I guess that's kind of my issue, regardless of what that says, Gaines, I mean, Craig, regardless of what that says, at some point, PRV's leasehold property is allowing siltation into the actual reservoir through this ditch.
They know, maintaining their.
I mean, a- a- I agree with you what it says, but at the end of the day, it's their property.
Sure. Well, and, you know, the biggest problem we have with them is we, we kind of walk, have to walk on eggshells with them, because if we go over there rough with too many feathers, they could say, you know, "We really don't need you here." Uh, I mean, so we've, we've kind of walked eggshells with them. Uh, you know, we've asked for help, and they, they just, they continue to say that it's, it's y'all's issue because of what the lease said in ninety-eight. I'm like, "Well, I understand that, but in ninety-eight, you could step across that ditch."
Yeah.
You know, and, and now you can't.
And, and, and I guess what's got us hung up is, is legally, we can't get into the ditch.
Sure.
So we've got to find a way to help legally.
Well, and, and you know, that's why we came today, is, is just to ask any and all help. I mean, if you know somebody over at PRV and you can, you can talk to them and, and see, you know, if, y'all may have more pull with them than we do, um, you know, or, or go through the grant process, you know, if you, if you know anybody with the, in our city, uh, you could put a little bug in their ear, and, you know, even if it's just bumping us up the list a little bit.
Sure.
Um, you know, I, we, we're not coming asking for money. Uh, we, we, we don't, we know you're not gonna, you know, spend a billion, million and a half on it, well, that's not what we're asking for. We're just asking for some assistance, some help, anything we can get, uh, whether it's just, you know, putting us in contact with the right people, or, or y'all contact them and, and, and get them to contact us, however that works.
Okay.
Alright.
So I'm clear, is, is any of this stormwater actually getting in the reservoir, or is it, or is it all going downstream?
Pearl River.
It's Pearl River, I mean, it's going in below the dam.
Below the dam.
I, I, I want to make sure that I'm not saying something inaccurate when I have conversations.
Yes, it, it drops in below the dam.
Alright. That, that may not help much.
This is, this is directly behind the old rapids on the reservoir.
Yes.
And that creek's been running straight across, parallel with spillway road.
Gotcha.
That's gonna tee into, uh, Pearl, below, below the spillway, so.
South of the dam. That, that, that doesn't really help us a whole lot. Yeah. Okay.
Alright.
That may be part of the reason, Steve, why the NRCS response was not as vocal.
I'll do everything I can.
Okay.
I, I'm in agreeance with you, you know, I'm there for you guys, so, we're in that same association, so.
Yep. That's good. Appreciate y'all.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I didn't recognize you, Craig. Good to see you. I'm probably better covered up, you know?
Okay, next on our agenda, we have Mr. Bill Stevens.
Thanks, John, very much.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, guys, for your time. I appreciate it. I know, looks like you got a lot of stuff on your plate. Um, Bill Stevens, Willie B Steakhouse, eleven forty-nine Old Fannin Road. I don't know whether you all will come eat with me or not, but love to see y'all. Uh, what I was here for, I know a lot, there's been nineteen cities, and actually four around us in the metropolitan area has done LRDs. And I'm in a resort status up there where I met at eleven forty-nine Old Fannin Road, we're in a resort status, but we'd like to, I know since I've been there, I've been there a year this month, and I, there's four restaurants around me that's closed in the last six months in Rankin County, in that area up and around the reservoir. But, uh, I'd like for y'all to consider to, as Jackson, Ridgeland, Clinton, and Brandon, City of Brandon, designate that as a LRD.
What is an LRD?
It's a leisure recreational district by the ABC, and what it does, we already able, by the ABC, we're already able to, somebody comes into the, we actually put up a drive-through, because we had fifty percent capacity, and, uh, so, uh, we put up a little drive-through there, so if somebody wants to come by and pick up, uh, a dinner and take a bottle of wine home, they can, by the ABC, or like a six pack of beer, but, you know, uh, we, we're able to, you know, to do that, but like I say, you know, if you go to Mexican restaurant, or you go eat, some, a lot of people want to have a liquor drink, or a margarita or something to take home, but, you know, it would just be on orders for, for curbside pickup. Like I say, we're at fifty percent capacity. You know, I don't know whether any of y'all have been in the restaurant business, it's tough business, but, uh, fifty percent of the revenue in most restaurants is, is, is generated from alcohol. Uh, it, I guess it's, that's just a, that's a, you know, mo- most of that is done that way, so at fifty percent capacity, you know, it's gonna be hard for restaurants in Rankin County to contend, to, to survive. Uh, so, that LRD is that leisure recreational district, and it allows ABC. I went to the ABC agent, and he said, "Well, Rankin County Board of Supervisors would have to vote on that for y'all to do that." Uh, somebody comes in buys dinner, and they want a, uh, a drink to go home, uh, with their dinner, they have to buy a dinner. Uh, they, they, they would be able to do that. That's what I'm asking today, was y'all would consider that.
So, so after we spoke on the phone, I kind of reached out to, uh, to our attorney, just to kind of figure out the legalities. I know we've had some law changes or some law uh, adjustments, I guess slay would be the right word, so I've asked him to kind of dive into it, and to kind of explain where we're at and the position we're in in Rankin County on what the current statute says, so we could all kind of be up to that, so you got a second to go through that?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to. The code section that provides for leisure and recreation districts is sixty-seven-one-one-oh-one. Not that anybody's interested in that, but it, it does in fact define uh, where or jurisdictions that are eligible to create a leisure and recreation district. So the first step would be to determine whether or not Rankin County, as an unincorporate, the, the unincorporated county section, whether it's even eligible to create such a district. Uh, the definition of county under this law is any county that has voted in favor of coming out from under the dry law.
Well, you know, the governor's already, prohibition is over with.
No. What, what the governor's statute, what the new statute did was to legalize possession of alcohol in any county, not sale.
Well, you know, we are already in a resort status now.
I, I understand.
There.
But that's a, that's a special classification authorized by state law under the local and private sections of sixty-seven-five, okay? That, it just impresses a resort status designation over an area. It, it doesn't provide leisure and recreation district status. It just, it's qualified resort status. Those things are not the same, okay? So you got the qualified resort status, but to do what you're wanting to do, there would have to be a, an impression of a leisure and recreation district over the area where your business is located, and that would be done in compliance with this state statute that says a county can do that as long as that county has voted to come out from under the dry law, and Rankin County has not done that. We're still dry. Now, there are sections of Rankin County, po- pockets of Rankin County, including the resort status area, that has been allowed to come out from under the dry law, but the county as a whole is still dry. And this, this statute says, if you're still dry as a county, you can't do an LRD in the county.
Even though you already got the resort status?
That's correct. So, to fix the problem, you need the legislature to change this definition of county under the leisure and recreation statute. Because right now, Rankin County does not qualify to address an LRD in the unincorporated county. It, it just doesn't. We can't do it. If we tried to do it, it would be shot down as invalid, void, of no use. And whatever you, whatever actions you may have undertaken with what you thought was authorization would simply have to be reversed. And ABC wouldn't provide a permit, or they would rescind any aspect of your permit that allowed for curbside take-home of an alcoholic beverage that qualifies under this status.
Yeah, I've already had a, well, I've, I've had conversations with ABC, and, and they're discussing is having board of supervisors vote on that.
Which would be great if Rankin County was not under the dry law. They could do.
The state, the state statute of him, the prohibition thing, will not, state don't override the county?
The, the only thing that the new statute that the governor recently signed was to authorize possession, not sale. It doesn't help you if your customers come up there.
Right.
And they've already got their alcohol in the car. They're welcome to have it in the car with them. They can't buy it from you. And his law didn't change that reality. This is only possession. That's all that did. So I, you know, we, anybody in here can go get alcohol from anywhere and bring it back into Rankin County, which is dry, and they're not gonna get charged for bootlegging. They're not gonna get charged with possession of alcohol.
So there's nineteen other cities in the state that's done that, the four, you know, of course, Jackson has done it.
The state of Mississippi.
Ridgeland's done it, and then the city of Bannon's done it.
Yeah. Hear, hear, hear me when I say this. The state legislature plugged that city into this statute and said, "That city is LRD." You're asking unincorporated county to be LRD, and this board can't do that until Rankin County is no longer dry. So you have two options. Get the law changed, so that Rankin County, which is dry, can still provide LRD as long as it's a qualified resort status. You could do that in this law, but that law's gotta be changed, and you'll get to do that next year, because they're finished this year. But, the, they, they could change the wording so that this board could apply LRD to a qualified resort status. They don't have the authority to do that right now, but this statute could be changed to authorize that. That's one option that you have, or you could petition to have an election to make Rankin County wet. Problem solved.
Well, I don't know, well, that's, 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 that'd be over my pay grade on that, but, uh.
Sounds like your best option is next year in the legislature to work with one of the guys that is favorable to your, to your position and say, "We need to tweak this LRD statute, so that even if a county is dry, as long as it's got a qualified resort status in it, and that's what I'm asking for help on, is where I am is qualified resort status, so it's already serving alcohol." I, I'm, all I want to do is just tweak it so I can do curbside. That could be done with this statute.
Yeah.
But not right now. The language does not allow it to happen. And your ABC friend, they're, they're smart guys, but they don't know everything.
Yeah, I need to follow that up with ABC as far as that, because I, I got some, I got some wrong information. I wouldn't even be here if, if I knew that information, if they'd told me that information at ABC. I wouldn't waste y'all's time.
Well, if I had known precisely what you were asking for, which I didn't know until you stood up there.
Yeah.
And asked precisely what you wanted, we probably could have had this conversation over the phone, but nonetheless, I wasn't exactly sure what you were asking for. So I was kind of loaded for bear.
Well, and, and that's the same, the reason I asked you to be coming here today, because he, he'll, he'll explain the statute to us and the law, and, and let the other board members kind of hear what you're asking for. So as this thing begins to progress and, and move along, everybody's kind of having that same conversation at this point, you know?
Right, right. Okay. Alrighty, guys, well, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Back to you.
Okay, we have no other public comment. It's time we move on to old business. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Brad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Contend agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Daniel. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Miss Caroline? Morning.
Morning.
I think we're okay.
I'm taking this off, because I'm, I don't talk loud enough anyways. Okay, I always get the most boring agenda items. Um.
Want to change it up?
I'm gonna try. Okay, A is simply, it's time for the land tax sale, um, just asking for, um, the ability to publish the notice. That will be published August fifth and August twelfth. It has to go twice. Um, we have to actually send that to the paper today, so, um, that'll be ready, so just asking for the authority to make that published.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Daniel?
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion?
Do I, do I get an opportunity to look and make sure I'm not on that list?
I'm gonna scroll it first, okay? I'll do a fine for, for all, yeah, everybody in the room. Um, okay.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Um, I'm actually gonna skip to C and come back to B, because C is quick also. We have, just, this is just part of our record retention policy. Um, we've got tons and tons and tons of stuff back there that can be disposed. Um, most of it obviously is from years and years ago, um, and I've requested that our office begin really routinely disposing of the, I mean, we, we have a record retention set by the state as to how long we have to keep certain items, and, um, we've gone through those, and so that's just requesting, um, I have submitted a letter for the specific items and just to, um, dispose of those.
Yep.
Um, again, most of it's old, 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 so.
So I'll make a motion on that bottom sentence right there for the tax lifter to dispose records, documents, and things in her request letter, so that's my motion.
Alright. Motion by Daniel?
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay, moving back up to, um, discussion of B, solid waste, our best friend. Um.
Not mine.
Do what?
They not mine.
Uh, not, mine either, Brad. Um, I've been talking with Craig on this a little bit. Um, there is a, what I think, a pretty substantial balance out there of accounts that are not collected over the years for various different reasons. I don't know, I have not dived into it very, very deeply. Um, but it's all monies that could go to the bottom line. Um, what I would like to talk with you guys about is maybe an option for how we can possibly get some of that money back in here. Um, there's, the car tag way works, um, and that is a way that we will continue, obviously, but any household through, and I say a twenty-four month period, because people will let tags expire and whatever, but if you haven't, within a twenty-four month period, gotten trapped in that we've held your tag because you have a past due balance, then we really need to revisit those accounts in particular. Um, there's just no, the, the car tag thing, for whatever reason, isn't working on those. Um, and then we have the people who will come in eventually, and when we tell them what their balance is, they will leave, and they will not get a car tag.
Or they go.
Or they.
Under their.
Correct.
Name, or.
Correct.
Scott County.
Correct. Yes, that does happen a lot, too. So I will say that obviously, I mean, the numbers tell that for the majority, the holding the car tag works. It's this other money out there, um, and my accountant brain cannot comfortably sit on that and say, "I'm just gonna ignore it." Um, so I, I wanna come, again, this is under y'all's purview, so I wanna come to y'all and see, um, Craig and I have talked some about an option, and, um, one of the options is to send out a blanket letter to those that are due, um, past due, way past due, and start working it from there. Um, it's really, waste management, this is layer one of the onion peel. The, the things that can be handled through that department, and that could substantially make that department better. Um, particularly for you guys in a budget perspective. Um, I know we, tell me if I'm leaving something out. Um, one of the things, though, is really just these, there needs to be a lot of research done on these old accounts. Some of it I know is probably something that rolled in from the old system, but the more recent, like I said, it's just the car tag holding is not catching them. It's, it's just not, because you have exactly the situation that you said, where they'll, or they will make up an address or, or whatever. Um, we also have some processes that we need to look into from new constructions. Um, had a conversation with, when the waste management people came, um, one of their employees, admittedly, for two years, did not get a bill um, and waited on it, because they knew they should get a bill, so those kind of things. So there's some processes from a collection standpoint that really can take place and need to be implemented. Um, I'm bringing this to you guys, because, again, that's really, I mean, we collect, but, but that's really as far as it goes from, from my purview. Um, I can do more, I will do more, but I need your guidance as to, to kind of what, what y'all want that to look.
The private driveways that might have three or four residents in the back, are they paying one fee, or are they all supposed to pay?
So, it depends. Um, there are some that contact us, and we, they're, they will pay one fee, but they're responsible for getting that to the end of the driveway, I guess you'd say. Um, it really depends, though. Not all are like that. It's just a matter of have they contacted us and have they worked out any agreement for that.
So, you're not paying nothing then, far as collections, I mean, for.
That could be, yes, that could be.
This isn't the first time this has come up. We've tried to tackle this before, but unfortunately, because the way we do collect ours, we're not able to hire a collection agency and go after them, so.
Yeah, so the statute appears to suggest, Jay, that you don't have to give up your car.
Yeah, so the statute appears to suggest, Jay, that you don't have to give up your car tag option to do another option. You just simply need to segregate the accounts that you are not going to utilize the car tag as an option for collection efforts.
Just can't parallel. We can't be...
Yeah, you can't do both of those for the same account, okay? So the, the statute appears to be broad enough to let us segregate out. I think what Caroline was getting at is that she's identified, at least to, at a, at a high level, at a superficial level, she's identified the accounts that I'll call especially problematic. The ones that the car tag either has been tried and hasn't worked, or has never even been tried because they're not showing up to even get a car tag, right? So those accounts, which have some age on them, we could segregate by finding of the board and utilize another collection method, whether that be just a straight attempt to collect via letter, collect demand letter that would probably issue out of the solid waste area. I would assist with that, try to help get that worded correctly, try that, see if that works. The board can move the accounts back and forth between the collection methods. So if at some point you say, "You know what, that's not gonna work either. Put it back over here," that can be done.
Is this some kind of new legislation?
Well, it's, it's a stat, you, you gotta go find the authorization. The statute that provides for the, for the hanging up of the car tag is a different statute that I'm talking about that says other collection options are open and available. We have an AG's opinion to that effect, by the way.
Well, this isn't the, the deal from the Supervision Association, right?
No, it's not. It's not. No, this would be internal to Rankin County. At the moment, the discussion is, we just need to figure out, is the board interested in utilizing some form of collection effort on what amounts to a fairly significant balance, unpaid balance?
My answer would be yes.
Yeah. The only thing I'd say though is before we just give it to anybody, I think we need to have some negotiations. You know, we need to get the best rate we can, whichever collection method we choose.
I, I, at the moment, I'm not gonna get ahead of my tax collector here. At the moment, there's no discussion about pushing this out to a third party. At the moment, the discussion is, can we do this in-house?
Can you add it on to the tax bill?
Yeah, so again, there are, there are a number of methods of collection. We've only gotten, we've only scratched the surface. They're down in the statute beyond just send them a letter and tell them to pay under penalty of the following things. That's, that's step one. That's what we're talking to y'all about. Let's push a demand letter out and see if we can get some response. Even if it's a 10% response, it's gonna be a significant amount of money.
You know, I don't know that even if we offered some type of a percentage amnesty, because when we do this, there's a lot of people, this room and at all is gonna be filled with people that says, has all kind of different excuses. And I would rather say, "We gave you an opportunity to come in. You hadn't paid in five years, and you know, even though you owed $5,000 or whatever, you know, we offered you an opportunity to settle this, and you didn't show up. So why are you here today?" I mean, that's, that, I would want to do something.
Right.
And it don't even have to be much amnesty. Just if you can get them in, set them down and work out payment agreement so that that group that comes in here, we can say, "This already happened, and you didn't show up then."
Yes, so I...
We're all be on board with trying to collect outstanding money.
Right, yeah.
Right, it's your aunt.
So to do what we're suggesting that we do, and what, what there appears to be some agreement that we ought to do, we will need to segregate the accounts that we're talking about here and let you guys actually make a finding that you do not want those accounts to be collected via the, the, the tag.
Holy cow.
Method, just those.
But really though, some of them are so past due or, or you, they make really good notes on a lot of, a lot of the waste management accounts too, especially when you've got the people that are coming in saying, and they're pretty good about, well, they used this address last time. So, but I mean, it, it, it's already an extremely time-consuming process to look those up for a car tag.
Caroline, have you talked to any of your staff? Have we sent, or did Judy's office send any kind of letters out in the past?
No, not to my knowledge.
But those people, and I'm sure you know, that work under her, they do a very diligent job. I mean, I've even had, and I'm not gonna call any name, come to my house and say, "Man, bought this vehicle out here for $3,000. I went down there to try to get a tag, and it's gonna cost me $10,000." I said, "What are you talking about? For a tag?" And then I said, it hit me, garbage. I said, "Have you gotten to it?" "Oh, I ain't never paid no garbage. I ain't never gonna pay no garbage." But I used to could get it in my so-and-so relative's name, and they switched the relatives around so much that they run out of relatives.
They caught it.
And her people are tracking it.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, it's pretty, it's a cumbersome process just to renew a car tag because of the, the solid waste piece. You know, it's not as simple as just, "I walk in with my card and I pay my," because they have to look up. And then you've got the, if they run out of relatives, then they'll start, and they will, they will start, "Oh, well, I think maybe it's this address," and so...
Some people don't drive no more.
Yeah.
They feel like they don't need the tags, and they don't drive.
Yeah. So, but it is a process, and it, it's not a simple one, and it's very time-consuming.
Slate, what kind of action do you need on our part on this?
Well, I, I, I think we just needed an indication from you guys that you're interested in us taking some sort of effort to pursue the unpaid balances, and you know, I, I think, I, I think the balance, as I appreciated, is significant enough to justify whatever effort we can make. At the, at the moment, my thought process is, let's try to do it internally and see what sort of response rate we get. And then after we have an opportunity to review the results, come back and talk about potentially additional types of activities. Just let y'all be responsible for authorizing, we're gonna do this step one first, and that, and that's it. Step one's gonna be, let's, let's aggregate the accounts that we think we need to pursue with a collection letter. Let's get them identified in some format. Let's get back in front of you guys at the next board meeting and say, "These are the ones we want authorization to try to collect in-house."
We, we really gotta do a better job of picking the garbage up though, because our...
We're gonna have a bunch that say, "Well, they don't come out of it once a week. Why am I paying full price?"
Two out of the last three Saturdays north of the county didn't get picked up. And we've been engaged with them so much that I would've thought...
Yeah, they've been here monthly, I would think, yeah.
Wouldn't call, I mean, they'd call me and tell me...
I called them yesterday.
I, I did too. And what their answer is, after they don't pick up on a Saturday, and I call Janice and say, "Janice, I don't wanna talk to them 'cause I'm too mad, but can you get in touch with them?" Their message back is, "We'll run a truck out there right now." Well, everybody's at work right now, and they done brought all their garbage back into their house. There's no reason to run a truck out there right now. You know, you, you miss the, when they, when the garbage is out there.
You pick up.
And, yeah, we, yeah, I mean, and most of the time, they don't even, I mean, they're honest. "Yeah, we didn't pick it up. We didn't go down there." And it's not a house, it's roads and miles. And it's just, I mean, it's getting worse.
Well, that, that contract's fixing me up, isn't it?
Well, I think at the end of the year. At the end of the...
Twenty-one.
Our, our year, not calendar year. So like, in the spring, we can start shopping.
Correct.
Yes. In fact, this time, this is the time that you will have to go out for RFP.
Yep.
You get one renewal, and so we're in our fifth year of our second renewal. So we're out of, we're out of time.
I love David Holloway. He did a great job. They had heat cups, but he was right on top of it. And now it's just almost like they're against us or whatever. I mean, it, it, if you, if you bring some of their attention that they didn't do, they're mad, a- almost angry with you that you brought it up.
But the new guy that's there now, Kenny Lance, he's, he's the one I've been contacting, and he's... But they still missing roads. The drivers aren't.
But I guess my overall problem is, that shouldn't be what we have to do all day long.
I know.
It shouldn't be a supervisor's job every single week to deal with somebody's trash can, I guess. And I know it falls on us at the same point, but we pay a lot of money for this, and I guess...
We're not getting a service.
That's correct.
Of course, their deal is, well, there's more tonnage, more garbage.
You know, the house talks don't represent it. They throw that out there and then do the count, and it...
Forty-seven thousand...
It, it, I don't think it represented what they were representing, so... But I know Caroline, this is not doing anything at all to fix...
I'm just, we get the same phone calls. I mean, we get every phone call y'all get, we get it three times because they wanna know why it hasn't been, I mean, we, we spend a block...
I was on the phone last night at eight, eight-thirty for 30 minutes, because her garbage hadn't been picked up in two months. She lives on a dead-end road, only house on the road, and they don't come down the road no more.
Yeah.
I, I'll be really curious to see what sort of response we get from just, just a, a very simple broadcast demand letter. Hey, we, we have not forgotten about your delinquent account. Hello.
So do we need to act on this?
Well, there's nothing to act on right now. We want a direction that you guys were open to this and essentially favored us moving in this direction. And what we'll need to do now is to identify the accounts, however we can do that. Well, we need to identify those accounts, and we need you guys to say, "These accounts right here, stop trying to collect through the tag hang-up process and collect in whatever other statutory method we can," which is gonna include just a straight-up demand letter. It could include us suing them for it, not likely, but could. There, eventually, it can end up as an additional ad valorem item, type ad valorem, type item on their tax bill.
Why can't we put that on that letter? These could pass...
Oh, it will be on there.
Add that to that.
Here, here are the following bad things that can happen if you don't go ahead and take care of this. That'll be on the letter, but we're, we're only going to represent as much as this board is comfortable knowing that it's headed out there. So if we tell them, "Hey, guess what? If you're claiming homestead, we're probably not gonna give you homestead if you don't get your tax, if you don't get your garbage bill paid up." May, maybe those kinds of things, if they see it in black and white, that'll help, because they figured out how to gain the car tag deal.
Cities put a clean up on the tax bills all the time. I wish they garbage cleaned up, did they?
We'll figure out ways to incentivize them going and getting taken care of if they're willing to do it. I, what I'm telling you is, even a modest response rate is gonna be a significant revenue improvement.
Exactly.
Now, where, where that money ends up, I, I think it's gotta go in the enterprise fund if I'm, but it, it's, it's, it's gonna help us continue to find where we stand now in solid waste collection, okay? And you guys...
Well, we, we lose them money.
Well, we, we, it, it's, it's kind of a misnomer. We, it was balanced, it was weighted heavily in favor on the front end, and now it's into the back end, and it's just, it's just how the dollars end up working out. It hasn't always been in this position, okay? I don't wanna mislead you guys. There's a, there is an imbalance between house counts that we pay for and house counts that we charge for. That, that is a difficult trick. That is very, very hard to get that balance correctly, and we do what we can to try to make that work, but that is, that is one area of the system that I think we have some shortfalls. Partial explanation for some revenue shortfalls is that more houses are being paid for than we're collecting them. Everybody following what I'm getting at there? And waste management, when they drive by, it's a house. It gets charged. Whether there's garbage there or not, it's a house. You follow that? But those folks may have been gone for six months, sold the house, and new folks ain't moved in. The, the account's in some sort of suspense because there's nobody in there. So we're not billing for the dead periods while we're paying for the dead periods. That, that's just one small example of why it's gonna always end up being skewed, all right? So it takes a lot, I'm saying all this to say this, it takes time, effort, attention, with an emphasis on attention, it, it's got to be policed. And what you guys did, not you guys, what, what the Board of Supervisors did years ago was said, "We don't want that under the Board of Supervisors. We want that moved over to the tax collector's operations." And so you're, you're asking this lady right here to, to get on top of that situation, and she's come to you guys and told you, "You've got a substantial unpaid balance of funds" that, and I wanted to address, Steve, your comment, that I'm not satisfied, as I sit here right now, is the type of revenue that this board has authority to discount or provide amnesty for. It's not a tax, okay? It's, it's a, it's a fee for service. So there may be some wiggle room in there to do some things with, but I haven't studied that closely, and I, I wanna be clear with you guys that that may not be an option.
It's probably not a good option, because like myself, we pay our garbage bill, you know, and I would say, "Wait a minute. I've been paying mine for 20 years. Why don't you knock a little off mine, if you can knock it off theirs?" So it's probably not a very good idea. But we, I would like to just give them an opportunity to come in and work something out before they're in here.
Paying the money.
Yeah, I don't care. I mean...
Well, and I think too, when we were researching too, they, they are entitled to a hearing at all times. So I know that we would have to work with a lot of them, and we, we, not very often, but we do have a few that come for a hearing to, to work out some kind of...
We've got a judge. We appointed a judge for that.
Yeah, it's, it's an administrative position, yes. And they, yeah, yeah, it's, it's an administrative position that essentially that, you know, they don't have, it's, it's not a court of record or anything like that, but it's, it's a, it's a hearing, it's a public hearing process.
To get, see, like, or, I mean, she's the one that can say, "You don't have to pay garbage anymore."
Actually, most of the time, it's, it's a dispute over whether or not, whether or not the, the, it's been charged correctly, the correct amount, or payments haven't been noted, here's proof of payment. That there's a, a lot of discrepancies that can be addressed that way. Admittedly, the law doesn't allow the board term to be a part of that, so I'm careful not to be involved in that.
All right.
So can, can we take it that you guys would like for us to pursue this alternative collection method for the defined accounts that we bring back to you?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. John.
I'm gonna make a petition, change the assessment to 2019 personal property assessment rule.
Motion by Daniel?
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Ayes have it. Good job, John. Good territory.
And just so you know, about this drawing stuff, there are offices that are just gonna evaluate.
Yeah.
I'd like to take A.
What's that have to do with coronavirus? I thought you said something about it.
All the restaurants, hotels, all them.
Oh, oh, I understand what you're saying then.
Oh, I'd like to take A, B, and C. They're at the synergy for utility permits.
Yes, so moved.
Motion by Daniel?
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes.
Request base earnings telephone company utility, obstruct fiber optic telecom along and across Gray Road, Crossroads, Noblen Bridge, King Trails, Lloyd, Irby, Goodman Road, Rankin Ferguson, Elman Johnson... Goodman Road, Rankin Ferguson, Elman Johnson, and Babelmo, Babel Drive and the District Four area. On it. Might this is one where you kinda left off the way to catch it up.
Second.
Alright, motion by Steve, second by Daniel, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank y'all.
Do what?
Put you up again?
Mr. President, we have one item on the agenda.
Three of them.
We are requesting authorization to advertise for bids for the Andrew Chapel clearing and grubbing phase two as a District Four project.
Oh, I make the motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Daniel, any discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Hey, 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 while, while I got Parker up here, I've been waiting on yours the whole time, you know, counting down the moments till you finally get up here. I hate to even say the word North Shore Spillway Road, um, so I'm not gonna say it, but the project we're talking about in that location.
Correct, yes, sir.
Start me out in where we're at and why we're not complete.
Okay, uh, we have a final inspection to develop a punch list next, or Wednesday, I believe. Uh, they're gonna do some camera work on some pipes at the end of this week. Uh, we had some drainage issues and we think there may be some obstructions in the pipes, so we're gonna put a camera in there to check that. Uh, as of the end of June, which is the last calculations we did, uh, they've used a hundred and fifty-two days based on our calculations, which is over the contract time.
And they were awarded, what, a hundred and eighteen?
Hundred and eighteen, yes.
Hundred and eighteen days, so they're that many days over the number.
Yes, sir.
And they're still not out there working.
So they've got some.
We're still running time.
Mine, that is correct. Uh, minor items, uh, and striping is the main thing. Uh, and they were holding on the striping, uh, at, at their own decision to make sure all the test reports came back good on the surface asphalt which was just put down. Uh, we did get those test reports back this week, uh, so we've informed them that the test reports are good, so, uh, we've told them, get the stripe on it.
Did you reach out to them and ask them to come in here again today?
We did.
So, Mr. Slay, here, here's kinda my problem. I started back in December asking them to come, I asked them to come in January for them to come in. I asked him field to come in in February, March, April, May, June, and here we are at the middle of July and I've asked him to come in just to give us a summary or talk to us about it and I can't get him field construction to show up in here and talk about the project.
They're working.
Well, no, that's what they're not doing. They're either hunting, fishing, working on somebody else's project or whatever it is. But this is an absolute disgrace of a contractor to act this way toward a county on a ninety-day project that I'm almost two years into. We awarded this project in December of twenty eighteen was when it was awarded to them. We sat in here with M.DOT and blessed them and granted them or whatever. They drew that timeout and now we're still in the process of almost into August and I can't get them to come finish this stuff. And it, it's absolutely absurd for a contractor to treat a county government, a state agency, a city government, the way him field construction has treated us on this project. So I'm extremely disappointed with them. I'm, I'm disappointed more on their communication process with this board, uh, and the ability to, uh, to finish this job for. So I'm extremely disappointed. We're still in a position where it's not fixed, where July, whatever the day is, and, uh, we're no more closer to getting this thing finished than we were in April. So, uh, time's continuing to take, you see, a hundred and fifty-two days as of right now. That number will go back up here in another couple of weeks because we'll be at the end of July. But we're thirty to forty days over, so they're in the penalty phase of this thing. Um, and we still have money left on the project, right?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Mr. Ross, can we put you down as a no on any award of any county project to that particular contractor? Just wanna put you down as a no?
In all caps.
Okay.
I mean, I, I can't believe the way him field's done us on this thing. It's extremely bad and, and it's a disservice to the people that live at the reservoir that has a crossover there. M.DOT's traffic count numbers there are pushing twenty-eight thousand per day through that intersection, twenty-eight thousand. And Highway forty-nine is just under forty thousand. So we've got that many people coming through Old Fan Spillway Road every single day that's having to deal with this mess and it makes us look incompetent. Maybe it's me, maybe it's Daniel's just poor management or, or negligence on the same side. But at some point, him field construction's gonna come in here and explain to me why this has been the, one of the biggest drops of the ball I, I can imagine, so, um.
I'm gonna go with a don on that one.
What's that?
That they come here and explain to you.
That they don't?
Yeah.
Well, then I guess, I guess the other issue.
Can you hold your check?
Absolutely, absolutely. So we'll get into the point where their attorney can talk to Slay and.
Well, Mr. Ross may have whatever check is authorized, if the project out is probably be in his possession would be my guess.
Yeah, well, I mean, and, and the good thing is, when Slay's hourly rate goes up, he talks a lot. So I, I expect to have a good one at that point, but.
He uses big words too.
Big words, a lot of words, so I, I'm extremely disappointed. So again, you reached out to him, asked him to come in today, they don't even wanna come in and talk about it. So that's the part that just drives me insane, so.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir.
Before you step down, you were up here, uh, about the clearing and grubbing on Andrew Chapel, District Four, and this isn't a, it's fixing to be acute, but our movement of utilities is fixing, I mean, and the one in potential, I mean, one potentially could be really bad.
Yes, sir.
We met with them in, on, uh, December the seventeenth.
Yes, sir.
And everybody had an understanding, let's get ahead of the game, we wanna get the utilities moved before. Have you had much contact with these guys? And I'm talking about energy.
We, we had talks, uh, we, we, I feel like things are moving now. Uh, I don't know why it took till now.
I'm gonna try to meet with the commissioner.
From December's, whatever day it was in December.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, our intent there was also to put all the utilities in the same room so they would know, hey, I'm not out there by myself, so maybe I can get there first.
Yep.
And I can have my pick of the place, uh, and, and also to know that there's only gonna be other people working, so I may have to work around people. Obviously, I, I don't, I don't know how to make that any more easy for them. Uh, I think the county did that.
Yeah.
Uh, but a, as of now, I mean, the, the water associations and, uh, some of the telecommunications have, they're, they're not actually physically moving. Some of them have, uh, been out there, but, uh, but they're in the process of it extensively, actively working on it, uh, up until, uh.
Last week.
A week ago, uh, we really weren't getting anything, uh, from Entergy. But like I said, I, I hope that ball's rolling now, but, uh, it, it's, it's just a shame that we can't get those things, uh, on, on the front end a little bit more so we don't end up getting to this point.
Well, you know, we only have three years.
Yes, sir.
And we already into one of those already.
Right.
Mr. Gaines, would it help your feelings if I told you that, uh, under additional business, I'll have an item to discuss with the board about Andrew Chapel?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I, I'm sorry about, uh, never mind, never mind. I, I looked at it wrong.
Alright.
Alright.
No, I'm sorry. I thought I had good news, but I don't.
So, how's your feelings, man?
Darn. Mr. Gaines, I'm not gonna string you along like that. I'm sorry, I don't have any good.
I'm always looking for good news.
I apologize, but I can't.
I, I'm gonna do what I can on my end.
And we're trying to, yes.
Alright. I'll, I'll have something to say here shortly about that as well.
Alright, Mr. Slay, you're up.
Gentlemen, it looks like the first four items, just setting public hearings for July the thirtieth, those will all be the same date, same time, July thirty-nine AM. If I could get a motion on A, B, C, and D together, please?
No, much. Motion by Steve, second by Daniel, any discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Last board meeting, we discussed with you guys our mobile home locating, relocating ordinance, y'all remember that? That ordinance is originally drafted by me, unfortunately, I don't have anybody else to blame on that, was from two thousand and thirteen, it was adopted by that board then. Uh, it, that, that ordinance is, uh, was admittedly, was, was too gangly. It, there were too many moving parts in it, uh, and too many, unfortunately, there were too many, uh, uh, escape hatches that were available uh, and it didn't provide the requisite enforcement. This board recognized that and asked, asked us to revisit it. Uh, Renee and I, uh, spent a good bit of time looking at how we could make revisions to the ordinance that made better sense and provided for better enforcement. What we have found is that the board generally likes to take the option that we assign responsibility for locating or relocating a mobile home unit into Rankin County without a permit to either the seller or the, or the installer, uh, rather than the homeowner. And rather than putting all of the burden on the homeowner to, uh, to address that kind of violation, we found that the, uh, the installer and the seller are better able, uh, to monitor that. Uh, they're the ones that have to deal with Rankin County more frequently, uh, and so that's what we've done, is we've prioritized the requirement of the seller and the installer to, to acquire that permit, to secure a permit before it happens. Uh, we've also adjusted the imposition of the fine from, uh, just a doubling of the permit fee up to five hundred dollars as a violation. Um, I will tell you that anecdotally, uh, the two most recent violations that we've had, we've engaged the mobile home seller. One has already paid the fine. We expect the other to pay the fine soon. Uh, so we are watching that, we're following the board's instructions and we're making them pay the freight for the mistake, okay? Uh, one of those is not a mistake. Uh, they, they know better. They've dealt with us frequently. Uh, could have been just an oversight with a new employee, but the company itself has a lot of experience with us and should know better. So what we're asking you to do is to amend your ordinance to allow for these improvements in enforcement. Uh, and, uh, if you will, that's, uh, that's what we wanna try to do today.
Alright.
Yeah, so I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Thinking by Brad, any discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay, item F, uh, is an action that's being requested by the developer of the Grants Ferry Parkway project. This is a TIF project that the board authorized in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, your commitment was for half, uh, of the increment, half of the ad valorem increase increment, uh, up to a max annually of five hundred thousand dollars. This is whatever additional ad valorem improvement tax increment comes from that development, therefore, there is no additional improvement. You make absolutely no payment towards debt service of the TIF bonds that will ultimately be issued on this project, okay? So it's increment financing is what you're doing. They have gone to the City of Brandon because the City of Brandon has chosen to rezone a significant amount of the property along the parkway from one zoning classification to another, and they had to adjust their TIF plan to accommodate for what the City of Brandon did in its zoning. The city has already approved the amended TIF plan. You are being asked to amend it to reflect accurately the amended plan, but it makes no change whatsoever in what you're already committed to do in sixteen. This is a technical amendment to match what the City of Brandon has authorized. Anybody clear? And so that's what's stated in here. It's the exact same commitment. I wanna tell you that it's not artfully stated, so I wanna clarify now on the record. What you have committed to do is to provide up to a max annually of the increment, ad valorem increment that represents five hundred thousand dollars. If it doesn't reach that, it's whatever the increment is. If it goes over, as far as the ad valorem impact, it goes over the five hundred thousand, you don't pay more than five hundred thousand. It's capped at that. But it's whatever the increment is, you're not, nobody's writing a check for five hundred thousand dollars unless there is an ad valorem increment to do it, okay? That, it was just not artfully stated.
So what did Brandon change, do you know?
I don't, it was to reflect though, that, um, keep in mind that generally speaking, uh, a, a TIF plan does not provide for increment financing on residential zone property.
And that's, there was something to do with that. I talked with Tom Cook and it was over my head and.
We, we don't, we don't provide increment financing for residentially zoned property.
Didn't have any effect on us.
So they can't go and take what was residential and move to commercial and then we be responsible for it?
That, that's cor, not without amending the plan and you agreeing to it.
Okay.
That's right.
So, that's what I was asking.
Yeah. So, apparently, just to clarify, what the City of Brandon has done is amended the plan as it relates to them to allow for some portion of the residential ad valorem to, to apply to the bond debt service.
Okay, alright.
But it was, it was a significant amount of property, four hundred and something acres, I think. You know what I'm thinking, Jay? It wa, it was a significant amount of the property that got converted over to residential. You know, Brandon's looking for housing storage, housing stock, just like all of our municipalities are, and so I understand why they did it, but they had to have some sort of agreement with, with the developer.
They changed a lot of their resident, or business to residential.
Well, I don't know what it was beforehand, Jay. I, I don't, I don't recall what the plan was. They changed it from something to residential.
Okay.
I just don't know what that was.
City of Brandon's approving.
Well, I make the motion.
Alright, motion by Steve.
Second.
Thinking by Daniel, any discussion?
And this road, this parkway, if you're going east, just past the co-op, turns off to the left and it'll, this next phase, we're in third phase, I think, but it will go, uh, to four seventy-one where you can hook in there and circumvent the, or hopefully help with some traffic problems here. But we have no monies from our accounts, whether it's Mike's or General or whatever. Now, there is some tax things that are, he's talking about, but I just want to be clear that when people see this four-lane nice and they say, well, if they can do that, why can't they fix my road? It, those people are paying for it themselves.
Yeah, that ain't us. That's the developer.
Private development and, uh, anyhow, I, I think it's the way to go and.
Yes, and, and if there is an ad valorem impact, a portion of that ad valorem impact will be utilized to debt service the bonds that are issued to reimburse the developer for some of these infrastructure improvements that end up being public infrastructure. Yes, so that, that's the whole notion of a TIF, but it, it's, it's pay-as-you-go and, and if the increment's not there, this board is not committed to do anything. Okay?
Okay. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
We will have a discussion with you, uh, in, in executive. Uh, you noticed Mr. Jones, uh, is back, I think Mr. Milton's back there as well, he had a mask on, couldn't recognize him. Uh, so we'll have some discussions with you guys coming up in executive. Um, but lastly, if I may have your indulgence, Mr. President, was this question about Andrew Chapel with Entergy. We met with Entergy's personnel within the past three weeks. Uh, we actually met over at Mike's office and, uh, we had a good representation from Entergy, they were very favorable about our need for speed, Steve. Um, we, we tried to impress on them that, uh, we were really concerned about the fact that we didn't seem to be getting any attention on relocation of the utilities and that the clearing, we, I mean, we alerted them, clearing and grubbing project is on, we explained to them. I, I, we gave them board dates so that they could provide us with documentation. They have provided documentation, but on a, it's on a different project. I, I thought it was, Andrew Chapel was not. Uh, and so, uh, they promised us the data as of yesterday. What I got, uh, was a calendar cancellation from the Entergy representative with no explanation.
Okay.
So I have no idea what to tell you as to why we don't have the documents. We could have acted on them today if we had had them, but we don't have the documents. I, I have to wonder, I would think that there would be a reasonable explanation for that, but, uh, we're still waiting.
What is it, Mike?
I can speak on that, if you need me to.
Sure.
Uh, I got a phone call yesterday saying that they wasn't through with Andrew Chapel like they had gave us the date when we met. Uh, wrote this date down, it was supposed to be Tuesday, we were supposed to be ready with Andrew Chapel. They said they had some special poles they had to do and had to get some prices on those and act like they wasn't through.
Special, like they've never put up before? Energy on Andrew Chapel?
That's what they was telling me on it. I'm just relaying the message. And that they was gonna try to have, have it in here by the August first, the best they could. That was the explanation I got on the call on it. So, uh, on that, so that, that was the explanation I got, Steve, out of Energy yesterday.
Alright.
We talked.
Hang on, Law, before we go to you, can we take Mike's word that way? He don't have to sit through all this. This, this part may take a minute.
I just got a couple of things for you. If I could indulge on the energy thing for just a second, just so you know, talk about the need for speed. Thanks to Energy, we tied up an engine company at the reservoir for in excess of two and a half hours yesterday trying to get some power cut off to a structure fire. They got the fire out and they still wouldn't tell us when they were coming, said they were busy, it'd be there when they got there, so they just secured it as best they could and left it open. Hope nothing bad happened. Thank you, Energy. Uh, the reason I'm here is, uh, you'll notice that I've got down there, uh, potential action on the customer repair of a early warning outdoor weather sirene. The estimate is eighty-one hundred dollars is what it's gonna take to get to the point that we can finish up getting it repaired. I think we're gonna end up, probably around the.
I think we're gonna end up, probably around the ten thousand dollar mark, um, on this thing, and I know there's been some discussion with you guys, about at some point, when are you gonna stop throwing money at this thing, if, if that's, if that's where you want to go, and I'm, and I'm good with that either way. Ms. Laura and Ms. Rebecca pulled me some really quick numbers, um, the other day, just so you know, and, and these are not set in stone numbers, this is only one particular vendor out of three that works on sirens, and nothing that we do ourselves. Batteries, we've probably replaced, uh, twenty to twenty-two sets of batteries, and they're anywhere from two to four batteries at a hundred and eighty dollars apiece, none of those chargers are in there. Little over fifteen thousand dollars in FY eighteen in repairs, we're about sixteen thousand dollars in nineteen, and I'm at twenty-five thousand today, not counting this eight thousand. Now, that's not, that's just fixing sirens when they break. Every single month when we do a siren test, uh, you can bank on between three and five of those are not gonna work. It could be something as simple as batteries, it could be something, uh, as extreme as, as this right here, eight thousand dollars. So, before, uh, knowing that you guys had had those discussions, I didn't want to go, uh, spend another ten thousand dollars on, on this siren, if that's not where you wanted to go. So, I just want a little bit of direction from you, of where you want me to go with that. But it's eighty-one hundred dollars to get started, I'm gonna say it's gonna be about ten thousand.
All right, do you have a motion?
Whose district is it in?
It's actually at Monterey Road and Allison, Alston, Monterey and Alston is where it's at.
That's you, Jay.
This is a tick for siren.
It's either mine or Jared's, it's close.
I mean, what I'd like to see is, I mean, of course, we had a conference call with the company the other day with the app situation for Rankin County, and it's something that's gonna, I think, work, but they had a few bugs, and we're gonna meet with them again, where everybody in Rankin County, no charge, download this app, and they'll send out messages, and you can do more than just weather alerts, you can do probably COVID alerts, or, or sheriffs are on the road closing.
The stuff that we're looking at, we want to be able to do, if, if you guys decide to go that way, it is a little bit more expensive, but one of the important things, I think, is geofencing and IPAS, such as stuff with the sheriff, when he has a, uh, uh, for some reason, he has a, a special call-out activation of his SRT, and it's inside of a subdivision, he really wants to lock people down, that his folks can go in there and throw a geofence, throw a thing out immediately to any cell phone in there, just like you get your Amber Alert, hey, we've got a situation, please stay in your home, don't get out, boom, we'll give you an all-clear when it's done. So if we go down that road, I think it's important that we get something that everybody in the county can use, um, even, even our, our water systems, you know, if you got a boil water alert, um, that they can geofence and send something out for our, our rural folks that don't get those things.
And that price is gonna be around thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars a year for these sirens, we're spending that or more each year just to try to maintain.
Twice that.
Yeah.
So y'all really thinking about doing away with sirens altogether?
I'm saying leave them there, but as they, I mean, if they cost more than what they're worth to repair, I mean.
I, I think we educate people in Rankin County over the next year, and we're not putting any new ones up, and then we fill our way through it, because this app stuff is not ready right now.
It's not ready.
And
I can see a siren working for the city of Brandon or Pearl, but out in my area, you got to have thirty of them out there for people to hear, and I mean, it's not just filed to maintain.
Uh, they're really for, you know, neighborhoods, subvisions, goes, or, or where there's development.
But, I'm gonna say most everybody's got a phone nowadays.
That's not why they were originally put out there, they're really put out there for farmers in the field, or people that were out.
Outdoor.
Right, where you would hear that there's something coming, before we had cell phones and radar.
TV. It's not designed as an internal siren.
It, I mean, you can't even hear them inside.
I know, but since, since I've been here, we've always put them where there's locations of people.
Going out to the house.
It's, uh, I mean, actually, if you're inside, your air conditioner, TV's going, you probably ain't gonna hear it, unless you live really close.
You can't hear it, unless you outside, and the wind's blowing in your direction.
Yeah. I, I think Steve's got a good point, if we gonna do it, we need to have a good product to move to.
And educate them between now and then.
Right. So, I said, if you want me to go ahead and get this repaired, I'll do it, if you want me to hang tight, we'll hang tight with it.
I'm, I'm, that's why I want to know whose district, uh, whoever's district it is can make the motion.
Is it, is it, while houses around it, or what?
Monterey and Allison, most, every one of them we put, that's how we do it, is go in, and actually, Lance Cooper's the one that has probably done the majority of this work in Rankin County, he goes in, when, when we get a, a location that's identified, where specifically is it gonna go, he goes in and pulls it down and looks at the house tops, and geographically, where is it to get the most effective range out of it? So every single one of them, uh, for the most part, are around highly populated areas.
We don't know, I mean, this eighty-one hundred, just to give us a starting point, it could be ten thousand more dollars when we get to that point.
Can you not fix it?
I have fixed a bunch of them.
I know.
I have fixed a bunch.
You fix it for cheaper than eighty-one hundred.
What scares me is, once we get this, this board and these drivers done, uh, for some reason, the last update that was done a year and a half ago, if you'll remember, I threw a fit about that, now, all of a sudden, the, the CPUs just go crazy, they, they just forget their programming. Well, that costs us anywhere between three to six hundred dollars to have them come out, plug it up to their laptop, spend about thirty seconds, upload it, boom, it's back in the saddle, it works again. How's that mysteriously working? I don't know. Not saying there's anything nefarious going on, I'm just saying it may be an electromagnetic pulse, I don't know. But at any rate, it is what it is, but I'm scared that the, uh, the ACE thirty-six hundred is what's gonna ultimately be the back part of the problem, now you've just built a brand-new siren, because that's fifteen thousand dollars. And there's one vendor that's got it, and we have to use that vendor.
Well, until we get this other situation, the app deal, I mean, I, I guess we need to dig into it.
We'll drive them, all right, that'll work. If I can indulge you just for a second, I've had Melissa.
Hey, do we need to act on this, to, to vote to fix it?
He's in his budget.
I indicated, you indicated what you wanted done, so I'm, I'm okay, I, and the department has the funding to do it, and so it's not a budget issue.
So, if I can indulge you guys just for a second, Melissa. Uh, Brian, when this cousin deal first started, we had to have a contact with the, uh, State Department of Health, they were gonna send these addresses to, and
That list you're giving us daily now?
When, when we get it.
It's going crazy, though.
I know.
It's 'cause the numbers are true.
Well, I, I wouldn't be so sure. These numbers right here, Melissa, they put these together from the numbers that we got directly, she got directly from the State Department of Health. Those started on, in March, and, uh, just really quickly, I want to go over this with you, if you flip the first page over, you'll see a, a little bar graph she put together from March, five days of seventy-one cases, in those five days, and I'm sure they went back and captured some, which is why it was so high. So, flip the next page over, you go over to April, hundred and sixty-five cases. You can see there's some day spikes on there, most of those are on the Thursdays, for some reason. May, we're at two sixty-one. And then over to June, we had a really good spike, four hundred and thirty-eight cases. And in July, up to midnight last night, we were at three hundred and seventy-five cases here in Rankin County. The next page over, she broke it down in district where you could see it, now you'll notice that number says two fifty-four, that's as of midnight last night. Now, what we do that the State Department of Health does not do, by their recommendation, after fourteen days, you roll off their list. We roll them off, so these are two hundred and fifty-four active cases as of midnight in Rankin County. And just so you know, if you take the population off of, uh, uh, very reliable sources across the interstate, a, a little bit around a hundred and fifty-four thousand people in Rankin County, active cases in Rankin County, our population, we have point zero one six percent of our population is infected with COVID-nineteen as of midnight, point zero one six percent.
And Janice is reasoning District Three as high as COVID.
She also broke it down on the next page over by zip code. And then again, just another one from July, the ones on the back, this was taken from, uh, State Department of Health's website, on, uh, kind of breaking it out as, as far as, uh, age brackets and things of that nature, uh, long-term care facilities. We had, uh, sixty-eight percent of our deaths were not related to a long-term care facility, only thirty-one percent of those were, and, uh, she also broke it down, or she didn't, they broke it down by, uh, by race as well. But I wanted to share that with you, just to give you an idea, with everything that's going on with the COVID now, it, it, it is what it is.
Word, can you email that, get her to email?
Absolutely, yes, yes. She's got it on about six different spreadsheets, so what I'll do is I'll get her to, uh,
Maybe just email.
Are you okay with just scanning this in and making a document? Okay, we'll just do that, and we'll send it to you as a, as, as one of those, so. There we go. I will caution you to, uh, and I'm, I feel confident that you guys are staying up on the news, and, uh, so, just, just stay, stay close to it, there's lots of studies that are breaking over the last twenty-four hours, uh, I'll give, real quick, I'll recap one of those, in the state of Florida, they tested fifty-four thousand adolescents, adolescents from eighteen years and below. Out of the fifty-four thousand adolescents, they tested, they had thirty-four percent positive. All asymptomatic.
Say that again.
Story broke in the last twenty-four hours in the state of Florida. They tested fifty-four thousand adolescents, that's eighteen years and below. Out of the fifty-four thousand, thirty-four percent were positive for COVID-nineteen, asymptomatic. That broke in the news in the last twenty-four hours, so take that and put it in your magic pot, and see what happens in three weeks. So, that's all I got, thank you, guys.
Thanks. I, I could take your scan and then put it in. Okay.
I got a cup.
On the additional, are we staying under additional business, or you going back up?
No, we go to Laura.
I have, uh, the first thing I have you see is the view of the twenty-one preliminary budget, but I have an add before then that I'd like to take care of. This came from Carl Franco, and it is a change order for the Chancery Clerk's Office to make a revision of the office workstation that has to do with their copier. The total amount is two thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents, um, which he said he believes is a reasonable cost, but this was furniture ordered off the state contract, this is not, uh, part of all Britain's construction. So I really don't know why they're doing it as a change order, but either way, we need the authority to approve the additional cost of two thousand six forty-six seventy-eight to modify their workstation where their copier is.
Come out of his budget.
Well, this is coming out of the furniture budget for the courthouse.
Right, I got you.
All right, so moved.
Do you have a motion to add?
So moved.
Motion by Daniel.
Say it.
Second by Steve, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, say it.
Motion approved.
Motion by Daniel to approve.
Say it.
Second by Steve, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, say it.
All right, um, on A, it, my fault, there should have been a little more, the two thousand nineteen bond balance, I'd like to take that first, and then, if it's the board's pleasure, what y'all might want to do is go ahead and do the executive session, because the preliminary budget thing could take a while, so.
Okay, well, I tell you what, I think Daniel has some additional business in the board, or something?
Yeah, there was something, um, I guess maybe eight, ten months ago, on fire truck purchases. And word, word left, didn't he?
Yeah.
We had authorized, the reservoir was buying a fire truck, we authorized, yeah, we voted for it, no, I don't need him, I think, I think I got it. So basically, we voted to approve it, it was in their budget, all that kind of stuff like that, we allowed the reservoir at the time to hold on to their three hundred thousand dollar money that was coming to them, so we could draw the interest on it until the truck was ready to be paid for and purchased. So now, um, the trucks due back will be, uh, available to be picked up in September, so, uh, they need their check for three hundred thousand. I had Scott send me a letter for that, we'd already approved it back, uh, I don't know, November, or wherever it was, they ordered it, so it's a eight-month process to order. Scott sent me an email, Janice, and I just forwarded it over to you a second ago, it's a letter requesting that three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
And again, I don't know if I need action to authorize the cutting of that check, the truck's ready to get in the next two weeks.
Let's do, it, it won't hurt to do it, and that way I won't have to wait till the next docket.
Yeah, so that'll be my motion to authorize the release of that check, they were allowing us to hold the checks, we made the interest on it, said us paid it then.
Daniel had this item.
So.
Say it.
Second by Brad, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, say it.
And a motion approved.
Motion by Daniel to approve, sending a check, second by Brad, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, say it.
That's it, thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah.
All right, dig your session, we have a motion discussed, need going to dig your session.
Thanks, Word.
Do I?
Make a motion.
All right, motion by Brad, second by Steve, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, say it.
What are we going in for? This will be, uh, this will be an update on pending litigation, uh, there's also potential litigation, uh, and
It may be personnel.
I suspect that'll be a personnel item, here, here and there.
All right, got a motion going to dig your session for those reasons, motion by Daniel.
Say it.
Second by Brad, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, say it, we are in the dig your session.